Good morning, everybody. Let's call our meeting to order this Tuesday, May 7th, 9:30. Erica, if we could start with our roll call?
Commissioner Henry?
Here.
Commissioner Tedesco?
Here.
Commissioner Pinter?
Here.
Commissioner Odoricio?
Here.
Commissioner Baca?
Here.
Great. If I could invite you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay, do we have a motion to approve today's agenda?
So moved.
Second? Moved and seconded, that passes unanimously. We have some awards and presentations this morning. The first one, as I understand it, is for Economic Development Week. An important goal for this board is that our community and economic development department serve Adams County through an integrated and equitable approach to planning and community investment. This particular proclamation reminds us of the importance of that celebration, which supports expanding business opportunities and contributes to a local, healthy local economy. Now we have a proclamation for Economic Development Week. Whereas communities rely on economic development professionals to promote and improve economic well-being and quality of life, and whereas economic developers are engaged in a wide variety of settings, including rural and urban, local, state, and federal governments, public-private partnerships, chambers of Congress, universities, and a variety of other organizations and institutions, both in the public and private sectors. And whereas economic developers work to support and enhance existing businesses, as well as stimulate and incubate entrepreneurship to establish the next generation of new businesses. And whereas economic development is rooted in critical community partnerships between the public and private sectors to promote a shared vision for developing resilient communities. And whereas for communities like Adams County, that means coordinating activities that create, retain, and expand businesses and employment opportunities to facilitate sustainable growth and promote the economic and social well-being of residents and provide a stable tax base. And whereas the county's economic development vision works to support all businesses and residents of Adams County with direct business engagement in unincorporated areas, also in partnership with the economic development professionals within our cities, as well as within state and regional partners to attract and retain high-quality jobs and improve the quality of life within our community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Adams, State of Colorado, proclaims May 6th through 10th, 2024 is Economic Development Week, and this is signed by all of us. I believe we have Jenny Hall from our Community and Economic Development Department here to speak.
Good morning, and thank you, commissioners. Economic Development Week is an annual celebration led by the International Economic Development Council. It's a global initiative aimed at recognizing and celebrating the efforts that create vibrant communities and strong economies. It is a week dedicated to highlighting and validating the programs, best practices, and exceptional individuals that positively impact our lives, often through their behind-the-scenes work. As our local and regional economies evolve, the economic development profession must remain agile and responsive to change, and we could not achieve any individual success without the support and engagement of our economic development partners, our municipalities, economic development organizations, and chambers of commerce, many of whom are here with us today. It is through collaboration and cooperation with them that we are able to create opportunities in all of our communities and achieve sustainable growth and prosperity. I would like to welcome and invite all of our economic development partners who've joined us this morning to stand so they can be acknowledged, and would ask them to join us in a photo commemorating Economic Development Week 2024 afterwards. In particular, I know that we have several of our regional representatives, so Adams County Regional Economic Partnership. We have several of our city staff in attendance with us today, as well as many of our chambers of commerce, so please stand and be recognized. Thank you, and I also want to give a quick acknowledgement to our internal Adams County Economic Development staff. Manager Lucas Workman could not be with us today, but we have Business Development Officer Victoria Hayfley, Economic Development Research Coordinator Ethan Rouse, and Development Marketing Specialist Caroline Joy. Thank you.
Thank you all so much, and you all represent so many different types of economic development. So thank you for the regional partners and our city partners and our internal partners and the businesses that volunteer their time to be part of those boards to help enrich our community and grow healthy economy and good jobs. We'll take the photo at the end. We have one more proclamation this morning, and I will turn it over to Commissioner Tedesco to read the proclamation on Foster Care Month. Each day in Colorado, approximately nine children and youth enter foster care.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The only thing I love more than economic development is child development. So, that being said, proclamation Foster Care Month, May 2024. Whereas Foster Care Awareness Month is celebrated nationally to raise awareness about foster care, to highlight that foster care is a means of support for families and not a substitute for parents, and to encourage more community involvement as foster families, volunteers, or mentors. And whereas childhood is a time of laughter and play, it is a time of curiosity and wonder. It is a time for making friends, learning, and exploring the world around them. Children who feel safe, secure, and loved can grow strong and confident. But for almost 4,500 of Colorado's children, this image of a happy childhood does not exist. These children's experience is often of sadness, pain, fear, and loss. It is separation from family, friends, community, and sometimes their pets that cannot remain with their birth families through no fault of their own. These children need temporary families who help them feel safe and secure, a place to heal from the trauma they have experienced. And whereas in 1988, May was declared Foster Care Month to raise awareness for foster care and celebrate and honor foster families and the foster care community. And whereas foster parents play a unique role with birth families, they fill in to support Adams County birth families who need time to overcome challenges and time to be whole again. And whereas we want to thank and highlight the large and diverse community of nonprofit organizations, businesses, civic groups, public servants, and individuals who are committed to the cause of caring for and raising awareness of the needs of children and youth in foster care. And whereas the Adams County Human Services Agency understands that children are key to Colorado's future's success and prosperity. And whereas Colorado is experiencing a shortage of foster families, Colorado needs more families willing to provide care for children and youth with complex behavioral and mental health needs so that they can live in family settings and not congregate care settings. And to provide care for sibling groups so they can remain together as they move through this challenging time in their life. And whereas Adams County has many wonderful foster families, but we still need more. And there is no better month to begin the process of becoming a foster parent than May, National Foster Care Month. And whereas the Adams County Board of County Commissioners recognizes the vital role that foster parents play in the lives of children and youth in foster care, and the roles caseworkers and community play in shaping the lives of children and youth in foster care. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Adams, State of Colorado, proclaims May 24th, May 2024, as Foster Care Month, signed by all the commissioners.
Thank you, sir. It's my understanding that Latasha Wyatt is a Foster Care Services and Support Supervisor with Human Services and is here to speak? Ms. Wyatt? Yeah, come on down with your coworkers.
Good morning. I have with me the foster care team at Adams County. We're just excited to take this month to honor and celebrate our foster families. We've done a lot in the last year to offer support, to celebrate, and to put the word out for the need of our foster families. This year in January, we were able to launch our therapeutic foster care program. We are doing more purposeful recruitment with our families, making sure that they're informed that we need more higher-acuity placements and placements that focus more on teens and adolescents. We have a lot of events that we've done and are planning to do. We have our annual holiday party, our annual Foster Care 5K, that was this past weekend. And we just started our Coffee with Foster Families, and we are gearing up for Recruitment Day with Adams County this summer. We continue to look at diversifying our program. We hold the All Children, All Families, and we have the highest benchmark for all children and families, but we have recognized that we need to expand that. So we are looking at how do we truly reflect our community and make diversity a priority in diversifying our foster families? Thank you.
Thank you so much. Do you want to introduce your team while they're up here?
Yeah, so like you said, I'm Latasha Wyatt. I'm one of the foster care supervisors. Pen Metzow is the other foster care supervisor. We have Susan Townsend, who works at our placement desk. Jill Schmidt-Love, Casimir Cuffey, Jen McCollum, Natalie King, and Sky Ripper are all of our certification workers. Oh yes, I also want to highlight, putting it on the spot, that we have the Moore family, who is our most veteran family, 21 years of service for our foster community. Unfortunately, they just told us that they are retiring from fostering, but they are still committed to supporting our program, so we're still excited for that.
Well, thank you so much. Any comments before we take a photo? Commissioner Ted?
I just got to say, in my 12 years of working here, I've worked with this department over many, many things, and you know, the amount of progress we've made for foster kids and what we've done from building the new Human Services Center that, you know, basically allowed you to not house kids temporarily in, you know, very small cubicles or in hallways or on the floor, and the strain that it put on caseworkers having to man those spaces 24/7 and just take care of these kids, but that dedication alone, regardless of the situation you were in, was amazing. And it was a privilege as a commissioner to be at the forefront of building these new spaces like the Pinkman Ellis Human Services Center, like the Homes for Hope, like some of the buildings and affordable housing that we've built that house aging out of foster care youth. Your team and what you do is amazing, and I want to say, I just, I appreciate you. You touch my heart. You are the reason why these kids have such hope in the future. Keep up the good work. Thank you. And I do want to say to the Moore family, Cody, Lori, James, who's not here, I'm sure he's working, providing for, you know, everyone. James actually is the Santa Claus every year, and we're going to miss him if he's not going to continue doing that. But they have been amazing. Oh, the son, Cody, you're taking over. Nice. You're not as gray, though. But, you know, it's because of these relationships and what you've built, right? That Adams County is really the forefront of what we do for foster families. And so keep up the good work, and I'm so proud of him and just so happy that I was able to spend so much time with you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So we'll do our photo with the foster care, celebrating Foster Care Month first, unless there's additional comments. We'll come down. Moore family, if you want to come join us, and then we'll do Economic Development Week next. Good morning. Returning to our regularly scheduled agenda. Do we have any public comment this morning? Citizen communication? Clerk?
We do have several people signed up this morning for a general comment.
Great, so let's read the first two, and then we'll invite them down and start there. And so first person and then the second.
Terrence Stewart, Leslie Cortez.
Okay, so Ms. Stewart, we could start with you.
Dear honorable members of the Board of County Commissioners, my name is Taryn. I am a wife. I have a mother of six children. I am an owner.
Oh, I apologize. I didn't give you instructions. Your name and address, please, to start. So we'll just pause your time and let you get started.
No, that's okay. Now I can calm down and we'll start over and we already got the first date. We're here. So my name is Taryn Stewart. My, I'm representing my small business and the address is 18 North Main Street. I'm in Brighton, Colorado, 80601.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Keep going.
Okay. Let's try this again. Dear honorable members of the Board of County Commissioners, my name is Taryn. I am the, I am a wife. I am a mother of six children. I'm the owner of three small businesses and I'm on the brink of launching a nonprofit. I stand before you today to address the heartbeat of our communities, which is small businesses. These enterprises are not merely brick and mortar establishments or simply a place of commerce. They are the very heart and soul of our neighborhoods. The cornerstones of our economic stability and the driving force behind the spirit of giving back and what makes our communities thrive. Small businesses embody what it means to be rooted in a community. They are more than just a place to shop and dine. They are the gathering spots where neighbors connect, friendships form, and memories are made. They provide a sense of identity and belonging that simply cannot be replicated by large corporations. Beyond their economic impact and social significance, small businesses are also the unsung heroes of our communities. Time and time again, we see these establishments and their owners are the first to step up to support local charities, sponsor community events, and rally behind causes that uplift those in need. Whether it's donating goods, volunteering our time, or hosting fundraisers, small businesses are always at the forefront of giving back to the very communities that support them. With their generosity, they know no bounds and their impact resonates far beyond the walls of their establishments. As stewards of our community and our county's future, it is imperative that we recognize the vital role that small businesses play. They're entrepreneurs with a vision, risk takers with a mission, and dreamers with a passion for making the community a better place for all. They embody the spirit of resilience, innovation, and compassion that defines the essence of the community that I am very proud to be a part of. I have the honor of knowing Melinda, owner, the, the owner of Simply Pizza, as more than just a mentor or a friend. Through her active involvement in the community, Melinda has shown that she has the heart to support those around her in the pursuit of success. Not content with merely empowering fellow, fellow small business owners like myself, Melinda also dedicates herself to nurturing the next generation of entrepreneurs, the youth who hold the key to our community's future. Melinda understands that success is not measured solely by profit, but by the positive impact that we make in the lives of others. She exemplifies the spirit of giving back, not as an obligation, but as a heartfelt desire to uplift and inspire those around her. And at the everyday, at the end of the day, everything that Melinda and her business stands for is more than just simply pizza. I urge you as team commissioners to prioritize and support the growth and sustainability of our local small businesses. Let us pledge our support to initiatives that empower entrepreneurs, strengthen small businesses, and foster a culture of giving back to our community. Never forgetting that small businesses are not just the backbone of our economy, but we are the heart of our communities. It is imperative to, to honor their dedication, to celebrate their achievements, to champion their causes as we work together to build a better future. We must stand united to protect small businesses and their owners from ever being in a situation for a minute where an entity can stand before them or go before them saying that you are not community oriented or mission driven.
It is your time.
Okay. Thank you for fostering the environment for entrepreneurs like myself, Melinda, and other small businesses to thrive and continue making a difference for those around us, even if it's more than one slice of pizza.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Okay. I'll just, I'll repeat the instructions since I missed it the first time. Name, address, and three minutes. So please get started.
Okay. Hi, I'm Leslie Cortez. Um, the address of my business is 29 North Main Street. Um, I've been a part of this community for 24 years. I, I'm blessed to have stumbled across, uh, Brighton. Um, to build, you know, exactly what I've done for myself, my family. I've raised three boys here who now are working and, uh, giving back to the community as well. Um, I'm a, my business is Primarica. I'm a financial advisor. Um, I've served for nine years on the Brighton High School Booster, um, both football and basketball. So that it fostered the opportunity for me to learn how to give back, how to, uh, to be a community, uh, leader in myself. Um, I am a member of the Brighton Chamber of Commerce. I've sat on that board this is my third year. I'm an active part of the, our community in Adams County. As a local business owner, I am lucky to be surrounded by peer business owners that are also active participants in our community. We are donors, volunteers, and community champions, building relationships and taking care of our, our neighbors is a principle of our businesses, our business models. I came to speak on behalf of Simply Pizza. Pizza's recent denial of an RFP that was said to be denied because of their lack of being community oriented. Despite being a sole applicant, Simply Pizza, and then I also hope that being here and speaking up for small, uh, small and local businesses as fundamental community partners brings a light to the future of the RVP opportunities in the county. Uh, local business owners are, are the change drivers and should be considered for these opportunities. So thank you.
Thank you. Erica, who's next?
Star Treheo.
Same instructions, come on down, introduce yourself, name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Awesome. Thank you. Hi, my name is Star Treheo and my address is 10180 East 112th Way. It's Henderson, Colorado. Um, good morning. Um, like I said, I'm Star Treheo. I'm a dedicated community member. Um, always have been, and I have a passion for supporting our community. I'm also the family programs manager at Almost Home. I oversee three of our programs, including our emergency family shelter. Our mission at Almost Home is centered on empowering self-sustainability by offering resource navigation, assistance, and guidance to individuals facing home, housing instability and homelessness. At Almost Home, we envision a community where everyone has fair access to safe and sustainable housing. When families experience housing instability, they require comprehensive support and wraparound services every step of the way. Our organization, supported by contributions from both the community and small businesses, strives to provide this vital assistance. We depend greatly on our collaborations with small businesses and our community to continue to serve and help break the barriers that our clients are facing to overcome homelessness. Simply Pizza has established itself as an invaluable partner in our enduring mission to address the homelessness in our community. Their commitment to our cause has been truly remarkable, showcased through a variety of supportive actions. Whether it's their generous services they provide for our events, donations, or their consistent bi-weekly deliveries to the shelter, Simply Pizza's dedication has remained unwavering. Each act of kindness and support from Simply Pizza serves to provide nourishment to those experiencing homelessness and also creates a tighter bond within our community. Through their contributions and continuous support, Simply Pizza not only feeds the hungry, but also feeds hope, and it strengthens the collective resolve of our community to tackle homelessness head on. Thank you.
Natalie Cummings.
Come on down, introduce yourself, name, address, and you'll have three minutes.
Of course. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Natalie Cummings. I currently serve as the president and CEO of the Greater Brighton Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau. Our office is located at 269 East Bridge Street, Brighton, 80601. It is my joy to be here this morning with some of my other Brighton and Adams County partners. Um, I am here today to stand before you, uh, commending you because today we get to show you how your county is unified to find solutions. Even though we found we have been siloed in areas, we also found that we can come together to correct these problems. We know through our state demographer, the Adams County is actually one of the youngest counties and will remain so for a while in the state of Colorado, which use, which gives us a unique responsibility, but also a unique opportunity. So the Brighton Chamber is here today exhibiting our partnership, uh, with our school district, 27J, our for-profit businesses, and our nonprofit businesses. We believe that work-based learning is going to be a solution that will change the landscape to our workforce development issues. So today we're just coming to you asking that you would think outside the box as we all work to collaborate uh, with our nonprofits, with our for-profits to provide opportunities in work-based learning and to better our workforce development situation. So thank you for your time today. Uh, we look forward to partnering with you and collaborating with you. And thank you for seeking out unique, out-of-the-box ideas that will help partner and help support the entities that are working together to make these things happen.
Thanks. Thank you. Erica, who's next?
Michael Burke.
Same instructions, come on down, introduce yourself, name and address, you'll have three minutes.
Good morning. Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Michael Burke. Address 10714 Fillmore Way, Northland, Colorado. But I work at 27J Schools upon 160th. I'm here to support the request that was denied for the RFP for Simply Pizza in a partnership we're looking to grow. As a proposal to create a location where our students can grow and learn in the culinary arts and business fields. The project will provide meaningful learning and work experience for our students who will shortly be leaders in our community and Adams County as a whole. 27J Schools is growing our work-based learning rapidly. We've already created partnerships with the city of Brighton, city of Thornton, city of Commerce City, and Adams County Government. Our students have been able to learn in real-world settings and apply skills they have learned in our career and technical programs. The benefits of work-based learning not only prepare students for their future, but it also creates graduation rates, attendance rates, and overall creation of better citizens. On a personal note, we have a problem in, in Adams County with our workforce development. We need to be training these kids to be prepared to replace those that are retiring in the growing industries around our area. We're working with area, um, school districts to figure out a way to meet businesses, to build that rapport and apprenticeships and work-based learning. So I ask that you please reconsider this. Thank you very much for your time.
Melinda Carbajal. Thank you. Come on down, introduce yourself, name, address, you'll have three minutes.
Perfect. My name is Melinda Carbajal, 866 South 9th Avenue. I also have a Brighton business on 117, uh, North Main Street. I, first of all, um, I am the managing member and CEO of Simply Pizza, and we recently applied for your RFP to take over the County Justice Center. I want to thank my peers for just coming out today and speaking on behalf of our entity. Um, but really for me, it's more than that. Um, I'm a community servant. I'm a 27J School Board Director. I'm an economic development small seat um, for EDC in Brighton. I am also an executive director for a nonprofit called Slice Out Hunger out of New York, where we stimulate the economy through pizzerias to serve people that are fighting food and insecurities. Um, I'm here because I think this is about collective impact. I think it's about aligning our goals. I think it's about thinking about community partners beyond nonprofits. I think it's about nonprofits and small business and big business and municipalities and counties and school districts all coming together to generate real powerful change and create innovative opportunities for people in our community. I'm a little bit, um, emotional about this, I would say, because I've served here for 14 years in a variety of capacities and work. Um, I was a community liaison for the city. Um, I'm dedicated to this area. I understand our area. And when we heard that we weren't community oriented or mission driven in an email from your staff denying our RFP as a sole applicant, um, I was actually heartbroken because for the last five years, Simply Pizza has worked to use our power in pizza to fight food insecurity and to provide opportunity for youth. You all offered us an ARPA grant and we're a recipient for 2022 in the amount of $60,000 where we were able to feed 9,000 people in need. 5,000 of those mills have been done and four will happen for the remainder of the year. As a partner to CASA and Almost Home, as a member of the chamber, um, as a staple at the Adams County Fair, I asked a lot of questions, right? You, you gave us an opportunity to work with Rocky Mountain Partnership and create KPIs as a for-profit business so that we could actually utilize our funding to impact the community. And we teach that to other businesses and that's why I think they support us. But your guys' answers were a little vague. That's what they told me. When I asked and wrote county commissioners, they came back and said your answers were vague. And I said, well, did you want to take an opportunity to meet with us? Cause it says you can. And they said, no, they were too vague to meet with you. And I said, well, I have a chance to speak to county commissioners. And they said, no, because we're going to go back out for the RFP, so they don't need to make that decision. And I said, well, can I protest? And they said, you can't protest because we didn't give it to anybody. So I stand here hoping that you guys can take the opportunity to look at us as a community heartbeat, that you can look at us as having a relationship with the county, that you can ask yourself, like your policy ask, is it the best interest of the county just not to have simply pizza? And that we start to break silos and barriers between departments and government entities so that we can truly serve our community. Because we are here to provide as a small business and we want to be a part of the program that allows us to be on the map for creating this type of structure. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else signed up to speak?
No, that was everyone.
Okay. Is there anyone in the public who didn't sign up who would like an opportunity to speak? Yeah, please come down. Please introduce yourself, uh, name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Uh, my name is Ken Ramirez. I live at 1308 Piccadilly Road. And, uh, I'm glad for the foster people out here that are doing the foster care. I'm glad you're doing the month, uh, celebration for them. I appreciate that very much. But for child mental health is what I'm concerned with, you know? I was watching on YouTube about furries out in Utah where the kids in school were protesting against other kids that think they're animals, you know? And sometimes with a mental disorder, uh, if it's affirmed that they have a if, if you're believing that they are what they are, they start cutting body parts off, you know? And I worry that our society is affirming disorders that are harmful to children. And it, it just obsesses me that, uh, in today's society, we're losing our rationality of what's right and wrong. That, that, uh, we affirm that, uh, it's okay to cut off, uh, gender parts. And then I'm worried that it's going to go to like, well, now that I think I'm a snake, I want to cut off my arm and that's okay mentally and society is going to agree with that, you know? It's, it just doesn't make sense that gender-affirming care are having surgery on children. And I'm, I'm assuming that, you know, a rational adult would not allow that. And I'm wondering why our government is affirming that sort of stuff. You know, it, it hurts to see that happening in today's society. It really does, you know, because they're children. They're too small to know the difference between if they can fly or not fly. Or if, you know, they, they pretend too much to affirm them to do something that can alter their lives for the rest of their life is, is insane. I mean, literally insane. Uh, thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it. God bless you.
Anyone else would like to speak? Okay. So I always give an opportunity to my colleagues to, um, have a legitimate official comment first. Would anyone like to have an official comment? Commissioner Bosso, start with you.
Great. Thank you, Chair. Um, I just want to state really quick that public comment is an opportunity for members of the public to come forward about a variety of issues. It was mentioned last time, it was our First Amendment right, um, that that happened. And so I think it would do all of us a lot of good if we get off our computers and we go for a walk once in a while. With that being said, uh, I want to ask on the record, um, the, the Justice Center food concession area has been vacant for quite some time. And it was requested by District Attorney Brian Mason that this board look into fulfilling that space. And it's been some time since we've had an update as a Board of County Commissioners. Um, I understand that an RFP went out, it was not awarded, um, it came back, there's concerns from members of the public. And so my ask today, um, I've been in, also in an email chain, uh, with administration is that that come back to the board during study session before it goes back out to an RFP. I think it's important that the board's intention, which was, um, it sounds like the intention was conveyed in the RFP, but it did not result in an award. Um, so without, uh, so I just asked that that come back for discussion by the board. so I just asked that that come back for discussion by the board. I want to say it's been at least two full years since we met with District Attorney Brian Mason. One for sure, that the Justice Center has been vacant. And that's a public facility and it's time that we have a solution for that. We have visitors, we have attorneys, we have staff in that building. We have jurors in that building. And what we asked administration is to think outside of the box, think of some different ideas of what does innovation look like? What does collaboration look like? Very foundational items that the board has agreed upon for many different things here in the county and building partnerships with business and our nonprofit community and for-profit community for that matter. So that's all I have to state for that. I won't comment on the second speaker. So thank you Chair, I'll go back to you.
All right, I believe Commissioner Odorizzi has requested to speak.
Yeah, so for the folks who came out in support of Simply Pizza, I would support Commissioner Baca's request that we inquire further into the process and learn a little bit more about the process and see how that happened. But that doesn't, regardless of what happened in this situation, that doesn't take away from the fact that you are an important part of the community through the other grants that you have received and through the partnerships. I think we can't take away that no matter what, we do appreciate you. As far as this process, I don't know enough about it, we're going to dive into it. But thank you all for everything that you do in the community and staying engaged, thank you.
Any other comments this morning? Okay, seeing no other comments this morning, again, I echo the comments of my colleagues, thank you for coming out. We, as you well know, don't award RFPs at public comment, but it's always good to hear from people. And I understood that before this meeting even started, they were reopening the RFP and I wish you the best of luck in your application. All right, that returns us to our agenda. Seeing as there's no more elected official communication, is there a motion on the consent calendar?
Madam Chair, move to approve the consent calendar as presented in the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second that passes, I believe unanimously, if the computer would go. All right, that brings us to new business, County Manager, I believe you have one item this morning?
Yes.
Chair. Before you, I need IT again.
Okay, well, and that's why they're here with us.
Thank you, but proceed.
All right, County Manager, back to you.
Yes, we have one item this morning. It is a resolution approving an agreement between Adams County and Vanner Construction Management in the amount of eight hundred thousand for owner's representative services for the Adams County Detention Facility, RFP twenty twenty-four point one one four. Kat Townsend with Facilities is presenting the item.
Good morning Commissioners, Catherine Townsend, Project Manager with Fleet and Facility Management, Planning, Design and Construction Department. This morning's request is to approve the owner's represented professional services agreement for the detention facility master plan. The nineteen eighty-three detention facility is showing signs of degradation as it oversees and manages an average population of thirteen hundred occupants and is operational twenty-four seven. Various assessments are complete and/or underway. Structural integrity, ground and surface water conditions, accessibility and regulatory compliances, sustainability and carbon footprint impacts, operational and programming circulation, critical systems, building envelope thermal conditions, all to determine the essential needs for longevity and safety of the facility as we serve Adams County community, visitors, professionals, and occupants while sustaining qualified staff. Although numerous high priority projects are ongoing to ensure safety, enhance indoor air quality, address compliance issues, and correct much-needed deficiencies, improvements and corrections are continuous and it is difficult to remedy all as the building is deteriorating along with facing the challenge of obsolete systems. Two options are being considered as potential course of action. One, expanding and renovating of the existing facility. Two, building a new facility. We plan to bring back that conversation to the board in late June with the results of the various assessments mentioned above. Our recommendation at this time is to award a professional services agreement for owner's representative to assist with coordinating these efforts through the initial phase of programming, discovery, and pre-design. Services will include supporting assessments and site selection opportunities to join forces with the project team, sheriff's staff, public relations, and the future design team to ensure success of the best long-term solution. In February of twenty twenty-four, a formal request for proposal solicitation was issued in accordance with Adams County Best Value Contracting Policy ten seventy-one. A thorough evaluation with the selected review committee weighed the following criteria. Professionalism, understanding of the project, the proposed team members and their experiences, similar project experience, and general terms and fees. It was determined that Vanner Construction Management, Inc., met and exceeded these requirements and was found to be the best value for the county. The request is to approve the initial programming, discovery, and pre-design professional services agreement with Vanner Construction Management in the amount of eight hundred thousand dollars, which is appropriated within the twenty twenty-four budget. This agreement is based on a phased procurement approach with milestones to seek approval upon initiating the preceding phases. The overall services equate to a two percent of the project construction cost. Are there any questions?
I don't have any questions colleagues, do we have any questions on this particular item? We've been hearing about it for quite some time. Is that? Are you trying to make a motion?
No, I was just catching up with the button.
Okay.
But I will make the motion.
All right, Commissioner Odorizzi will make a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to approve. Well, just to make a record first, I think it is important to note that when we're talking about having an owner's representative service, this is something that really does serve as kind of an owner's representative. It serves as a representative that also works closely with the private sector in this course of the project to make sure that Ts are crossed and Is are dotted. And also make sure that estimates and the process is being followed. So I think in our history with having management and project management from the government side working alongside with the private sector, when we do have folks come in for these large capital projects, usually end up in keeping projects more on time and more on budget. So with that motion, with that set of facts and history, I'm going to move to approve this resolution for an agreement between Adams and Vanner Construction Management in the amount of eight hundred thousand dollars for owner's representative services for the Adams County Detention Facility, RFP two thousand twenty-four dash dot one one four. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm happy to second that, but I do have a question for staff. So help me out on the process. We have another facility being considered that has not yet been budgeted. So that one went through a CMGC process, this one is an owner's rep. So what is the, you know, owner's rep, I heard what you said, so what is the next steps in this? Because while we're still waiting for the feasibility study to come back, it's been discussed many times. The sheriff was present and was a presenter many times. I feel like as we take these small steps, that at what point, and I'm not suggesting, I do support this, I've been to the detention facility recently on a tour. I feel like the board is put in a place that different processes where we can't deny, we are so far down the line that denial does not seem we're on a slippery slope and it speaks more to the other facility versus this facility. So what's the next steps? We get an owner's rep on board and then what happens?
Yeah, so next week we are prepared to present the AE contract for the design side of things. So this is a heavy lift for the team to walk us through and get us through these elements and these tasks. So this pre-design, discovery, and site selection and analysis that we're going to present, these are all things that will help you make, help you and the county to make the best decision for us, for the facility.
And Commissioner, to give you sort of the overview, Kat is talking about our next stage in design. A and E is reference to architecture and engineering for the uninitiated, I suppose. But in this case, the owner's rep starts first at the design stage. Then we bring the designer on, both work together for constructability so that they can bring a design to you all that we know we can first off build and then that we can build to the price that we say we're going to be using. At this stage, we're in the part of the story for the detention facility where you're still determining what are the site conditions and structural conditions of the existing building. Pardon me, and the feasibility of reconstructing in that site or needing to move to another site. That's our discussion in June that Kat mentioned. So that's the stages we're at with this story. With the other project you are referencing, we also are in owner's representation to assist in pre-design work and discovery, same thing. CMGC, in that case, that design was a little farther along. And that is Construction Management General Contractor, also for the uninitiated and anyone watching this. That is for constructability as well and they would work to help us determine how to face that project and then present that design to you all. And at that design approval, that's yay or nay on whether to continue forward in that design respect. But there's several stages in those large projects that you all will see. Generally, it's about a third of the way through, about half of the way through, and then the final way through to ensure that design is proceeding in the fashion that you all would like it, particularly in these larger projects.
Okay, thank you for that. And so design work that you spoke of, is it, are they looking at design conditions as is to design and remodel in place and they're also looking at design for a new facility?
That's correct.
So we're doing both?
We are doing both at this stage. We will get to a certain level of renovation or new build, but that is based upon all of the reporting that we're going to share with you all. So we wouldn't want to go to, say, ninety percent design on both paths because that wouldn't be efficient and proper use of investment on this facility. But we will get to far enough along to where you all will understand what the site conditions are in the current location, to where you can basically fish or cut bait on that site. And then once we've determined that as a team working together based on that analysis, then we would put all the eggs in the new build basket if that's the case, or the renovation basket. And then we would proceed to full design on one of those paths.
Okay. Thank you for that. And I understand that for this facility in particular, there's still a substantial amount of work that needs to be done to bring it to regulation.
That is absolutely true.
To operational efficiency.
And just as a reminder to anyone watching and the rest of you, you all have decided that instead of going forth with, you know, the fix-it-as-we-go plan, the ten million a year forever, that we would pursue this renovation or new build investigation. So that's why that build-as-you-go or repair-as-you-go isn't included here.
Great, thank you Alicia.
Thank you Alicia.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any more discussion before we vote? Seeing no more discussion, let's vote. Okay, that also passes unanimously. County Attorney, do you have anything this morning?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do Commissioners, I have two matters that I would like to talk to you about in executive session today. The first would be pursuant to Colorado Revised Statute twenty-four six four oh two four B for the purpose of receiving legal advice regarding potential noise litigation.
Okay, is there a motion? I like that she's optimistic. All right, motion and a second. Believe everyone has voted. That also passes unanimously.
And then the second would be pursuant to Colorado Revised Statute twenty-four six four oh two four B and E for the purpose of receiving legal advice and instructing negotiators regarding the Brown claim.
Is there a motion on that? Salute. Moved and seconded, that also passes unanimously. Commissioner Tedesco.
Since we're still on the county attorney, I think it's only appropriate that we congratulate you on your award.
Oh yeah.
Yes, congratulations.
We will pause for a moment.
As only a bar association could do, it is the champion of jurisprudence. Well, that only depends on if I approve or if I like what you're telling me or not, just saying.
Well, congratulations to our champion of jurisprudence. And do you have anything else for us?
I do not, thank you.
Okay, two is enough. All right, that moves us to land use and we'll give you a couple of minutes to set up. What time is it? It is ten twenty-six, we'll be back at ten thirty? All right, let's call this back to order, it is ten thirty. Staff, are you ready to proceed? Great, let's begin with A Better Place Minor Subdivision.
Good morning Commissioners, my name is Brian Marion, I am a planner with the Community Economic Development Department. Today I will be presenting case PLT twenty twenty-two dash twenty-three. Name A Better Place Final Minor Platt located at seventy-two sixty-one Washington Street. And of course, okay. Their question in front of you this morning is a final plat for minor subdivision to create one lot in the Commercial Three Zone District. The property in question is located in West Adams County within the Welby neighborhood just east of the intersection between US Highway twenty-five and US Highway two seventy. The subject property is about point five seven acres or around twenty-five thousand square feet. In nineteen ninety-two, this property was subdivided, but it did not go through the county's formal subdivision process at the time, and therefore is considered to be illegally created by Adams County. The area surrounding the property is a mix of commercial and industrial uses that includes warehouses, waste management and recycling centers, commercial offices, and retail sites to include restaurants and convenience stores. The current zoning for the property is Commercial Three, which is designed to provide a retail and service district for most retail shopping and personal services for persons residing within the county and surrounding areas. The future land use of the subject property is mixed-use employment as approved by the Welby Neighborhood Plan back in two thousand and fourteen. The Neighborhood Plan ambitions this area with primary uses for offices, live manufacturing and distribution, technology-related uses, and clean industry in addition to retail and community facilities. As we can see from the site photos, the area surrounding the property is completely developed. To the north, we can see a small snippet of the surrounding area. To the north, you can see the old boyers building as well as a new waste and recycling facility. To the east, you can see some of the industrial warehousing, office space, and retail that currently characterizes the neighborhood. And to the south, we can see I two seventy directly bordered the property as it connects to US Highway twenty-five. Now, for a little bit of background on the site, there is a single-family home that has been converted into a commercial space via changing use and currently houses the applicant's business, A Better Place Funeral Home. There are currently two garages on the property, one of which was approved via variance back in nineteen seventy-two when the home was used for essential purposes. As I mentioned before, the subject, the subject property was illegally created back in nineteen ninety-two as it did not go through the proper subdivision entitlement process with the county. The applicant purchased the property in two thousand and eighteen but was not aware of this issue with the lot. So they want to formally plot the land to bring the property into compliance with county standards and in the future develop the property to expand their business. At this time, drainage improvements on the site are not needed, but any future development on site will require the applicant to go through the proper engineering review to assure compliance with county standards. Now, considering the approval of a minor final plat, the Commissioners should consider the following criteria of approval when reviewing this application. Conformance with subdivision standards, sufficient water supply, consistency with the comprehensive plan and any available area plan, adequate public facilities and infrastructure, compatibility with the surrounding area, harmony with the character of the neighborhood, and not detrimental to the area, to the future development of the area, and not detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of the inhabitants of the area and the county. In addition, to review on the plat against the criteria of approval, staff also reviewed the plat against the Commercial Three zoning standards to review compliance with the lot size and width. But requirements are being met by this plat as there is no lot size minimum for the zoning district, and the existing width of the lot exceeds the required minimum of the zoning district. Now, as part of this final plat proposal, a public notice and request for comments was sent to four hundred and sixty-one residents and property owners within a seven hundred and fifty-foot radius of the subject property. No public comments were provided on this entitlement process, and none of the outside referral agencies responded were concerned on this entitlement. Given the current conditions of the site and the proposed final plat, staff has been able to determine the following. The plat is consistent with the purposes of the subdivision design standards as the proposed subdivision dimensions meet lot depth and width requirements. The applicant has provided sufficient water supply from Nor Washington Street Water and Sanitation District. There are no topographical conditions that make the proposed subdivision hazardous to the surrounding area. Drainage on the site is historical, and no drainage improvements are being proposed at this time. The final plat is consistent with the goals of the Welby Neighborhood Plan and advancing Adams. The plat is compatible with the surrounding area, harmonious with the character of the neighborhood, and not detrimental to the immediate area, and not detrimental to the future development of the area. Lastly, the plat is also not a detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the inhabitants of the area and the county. Additionally, as part of this entitlement process, the planning commission heard this case on March twenty-eight, two thousand and twenty-four, and supported the approval by vote in seven to zero in favor of the plat. There were no public comments related to this application, and the planning commissions had no concerns with this proposal. Therefore, staff recommends approval of case PLT two thousand and twenty-two dash twenty-three with eleven findings of facts, one condition, and one note. Here are the recommended findings of facts. And as part of the conditions of approval, any future development on the site, including the increase of impervious area, will require a drainage analysis and/or study to determine how thrown water should be mitigated through detention and water quality, best practices. With that, I complete my presentation, but I am available for questions. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Colleagues, do we have any questions for staff? I do not see any questions for staff. Oh, Commissioner Tedesco? Okay. I like that. All right. So next is the applicant. Please come on down, introduce yourself, and if you have a presentation, let's get started.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you this morning. My name is Carolyn White. I'm with the Brownstein Law Firm, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant, A Better Place Funeral Home. I have a very brief presentation, and I'll try to avoid duplicating anything that was just presented by staff. I'd like to start by introducing my client, A Better Place Funeral Home. As you can see, they've been offering low-cost, accessible funeral services in the Denver metro area for approximately fifteen years. With me here today is the owner of the company, Jennifer Connell, and her colleague, Kimberly Selby Pounds. If you had any specific questions about their operations, they'd be glad to answer them. We're here, obviously, to request that you approve the final minor subdivision for the property. The property and the application for the plat was already very thoroughly described by Mr. Maron. I just wanted to give you a little bit of background about A Better Place because they are a special client of ours. As you can see, some of their data is summarized on the screen. They provide low-cost, accessible funeral services. Fifty percent of the families that they serve are from a minority group or lower socioeconomic class. They provide very accessible and low-cost services because of the fact that they serve an underserved community is why they are eligible for our pro bono program at our firm and how I came to represent them. They also take abandoned cases from Adams County and from other jurisdictions around the metropolitan area. For example, in two thousand and twenty-three, they accepted forty-one such cases from Adams County. So they are a really special and important part of our community, and I just wanted to share a little bit of that history with you as part of this application process. The funeral home use is allowed use by right in the C three zone district. We're not here talking about the use, but I did get that question previously. And as was mentioned, they purchased the property and at the time, having no legal representation, they were not aware that they had purchased a lot that was not properly subdivided at the time. It was separated from the adjacent lot. So they subsequently received a notice of a zoning code violation from Adams County, and they sought legal counsel to address that, and that's how we came to represent them on this matter and on some other matters that they have going on. They also applied for and received from the county the change in use, which the prior owner had not secured at the time either, to approve the change from a previous, whatever the previous use was, to a commercial use. And that building, the single-family home that's now being used for commercial uses, is now the subject of that approved change in use. So here's a little bit of a view of the context. We've labeled some of the adjacent businesses so you can see what this area looks like. As was mentioned, C three zoning. I don't know why it says Lakewood Zone District. Here's the dimensions of the final plat. This is a brief summary of the legal criteria. Again, that was already covered, so I won't repeat it in detail. I just want to mention that this plat, unlike many that I have presented to you in the past, is not proposing any new construction or development. We are just drawing the lines on paper to match what the property is today. Any potential future development would be the subject of a separate application. And I know there was a note and condition proposed by staff to address that, and we're absolutely comfortable with that. With that proposed, with that proposed note and application. There is such an immense need for these services in Adams County, and this business is very interested in getting into compliance with the code, getting this matter taken, taken care of, and doing everything they can to continue to provide the services they have been providing and to expand those services potentially at some point in the future pursuant to a separate application. All of the criteria for our plat have been met, and there was no public comment on the plat. And with that, we ask for your approval of this plat, and we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you, Ms. White. Any questions for my colleagues? Okay, seeing no questions, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Tedesco? All right. I like it. All right. Well, we need to hear from the public first, just in case. Sorry, Ms. White. Is there anyone from the public who is here who would like to comment? All right, seeing none and hearing no questions, let's take that motion, Commissioner Tedesco.
Do we have the motion?
Oh, yes. You have to talk a wording. There were a lot of findings of fact.
We're waiting for the motion. I just want to say, having experienced a tremendous amount of loss over the last year, having tried to put together three funerals, and having family members that meet the criteria of who you're trying to serve, I am very grateful that there's another outlet somewhere. And I am so happy that you're working with Adams County. I'd love to hear that. I think, you know, just good luck in what you do. I, I don't know if that really sounds right when I say that because of what you do, but I'm glad you're, you're doing what you're doing. That being said, I will... Is this it at the bottom?
Yes, Commissioner.
I will move that the final minor plat, PLT two thousand and twenty-two dash twenty-three, with eleven findings of fact, one condition, and one note be approved. I move.
Madam Chair? You have to hit the button.
Oh, sorry.
All right. Yes, sir.
I was second, but I believe that Commissioner Baca has.
Yeah, I just have.
And then I do.
A quick question, a comment, and then a question. So first of all, I want to thank the applicant for being here today and coming into compliance. I know that this has been something the county has recently dealt with in the last couple of years, and so I appreciate your presence here in the business that you're providing, the service you're providing for Adams County and the surrounding region. But I do have one quick question. So the property adjacent, what are the setbacks for a C three? Because the property right next to, to the north, I believe, sustained some fire damage, and I don't know if it's, I don't know what the future of that looks like. So are there any setbacks, limitations for that? It will have to be probably a complete redevelopment, if not a brand-new. I doubt it will be a retail coffee shop again. I know that questions should be, but I don't want to get out of this without asking my question. Thank you, Commissioners.
Commissioner Baca, for C three, the minimum front setback is twenty-five feet, and for the side setback, it should be fifteen on one side and five on the other.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for that.
All right, we'll go ahead and take our vote now. We have a motion and a second. Let's all vote.
And then I'm seconding, and I want to thank Better Place for the work they did. They're also, similar to Chaz, when we were going through a situation with my mother, you guys were wonderful. So thank you. The final situation. So thank you.
That passes unanimously. Thank you. I believe that concludes our meeting. All right. Thank you.